This meeting with the Ashcock Board of Education for Wednesday, December 10th, 2014 at 6:00 PM. As this meeting is properly noticed, please call the hall.
Here.
Here?
Here.
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 Here. All right. Uh, this evening, we have workshops, and the first one is Lakeside Elementary. Our addition proposal leading us in that is Sushorn.
Well, we have Jim Boxer here, and Ray is here, and maybe Ash, and then some people from our committee at the school.
Right.
So, just let Ray start it off.
Are you in the board? Sure. Okay. Mm-hmm. I get good evening. My name's Jeffrey Ray.
Twenty-seven.
And, uh, we work with the Design Development Committee, and we really started at the basis of what were our priorities. And, uh, the, the way we're going to approach this is we're going to talk about-
If you go to the screen now, it was supposed to go. Technical difficulties.
We have the district's best expert here, the Deputy Superintendent. Maybe if I help you with that.
So, what we want to talk about tonight is how we, how that committee started developing it by a general concept. And from there, they then went into the detail of design development. So, we'd like to start with really talking about what the, uh, the general requirements were, and then how we developed this, uh, general plan.
So, you just use the minus and the pluses, because it will go from part to minus.
Okay. Okay. So, we'll, we'll start off with the conceptual plan. Uh, when we started talking about the conceptual idea of the building, we looked at many different locations on the building. We looked at both the west side of the building, we looked at the south side of the building, we looked at the north side of the building, and we looked at the east side of the building. Uh, as we were discussing which direction and the different plans, we had probably three or four different plans on each one of those areas, we started looking at, well, what were the main priorities of the facilities? One of the main priorities was to get all the students back into the building, so that we are a K-five facilities. Another one of the priorities was to create all the classroom approximately equal size. Right now, they've got some classrooms are at 900 square feet, and some that are at 730 square feet. So, to try to put all regular ed classrooms in comparable sizes. So, that's the other, another priority that we, we looked at. The, another priority, or one of the high priorities, was how traffic flows in and off of the site, and how we can separate and get a bit, a better controlled area for buses and bus drop-off, and a separate area for parents to be able to drop off that are not interfering with the buses. So, that was another one of the, um, high priorities they had. Uh, again, uh, one of the other priorities was to get natural light in all regular classrooms if we could. That's always a tough one to do, but we have accomplished it in, here in Phase One. Um, the, the next priority was to develop this addition so that it didn't affect, and it was in the correct location, so that as the building continues to grow and becomes a full two-track elementary school, and then could continue to all the way to a three-track elementary school with those classrooms always being in the same location and not having to renovate them, change them, or add to them, so that it became an efficient way of the, the building growing. Some of-
Stay there.
Uh, some of the things that were discussed as we, we walked through the facilities were, okay, our first priority was classrooms, um, and getting that onto the, into the budget. The next priority was to look at special education and what kind of spaces they needed. Then, we had to look at some of the other programs like art and music and what they needed. We talked about FIEB, PE, and outside playground area, and how that was going to affect. We talked about the separation of, um, FIEB and cafeteria. You know, could that be something that happened as we continue along in the programming? And along with that is additional space for the specialists that come in, in the office facility, and those types of things. So, those were the things that all built on top of what our main priority was, was getting the students back. So, that's how we started to look at the overall project and started to develop, developing different conceptual plans on, on the, on the building. So, this is a conceptual plan on the site. So, as we started to develop this, we looked at the north side of the site as being an area where we could bring the buses in, then wrap them around in the back parking area, and bring them, and then create a, uh, walk surface that would enter into the building in multiple locations, where kids could get off the buses, and they could enter in a age-appropriate entranceway for each one of those students. So, that's why you can see where those buses are loaded up, that, uh, they, they can line up there, they all have sidewalk to come off on, and then they have three different directions to go to get into the building, to, uh, reduce congestion before school and after school, so they can get to the buses and get in and out very easily. The other one was how can we utilize space the best? And one of the things we talked about was hard-surface playgrounds. Uh, as we started to develop the hard-surface playgrounds, the hard-surface playground today is to the south, and we actually now, because there's more kids coming to the site, where you see that 26 cars parking area, that will be divided off during the school day, and that will become hard-surface play area, because they do not need all those spaces for staff and everything else. So, by being able to utilize that for parking under major events, really helps their parking for major events, but it also helps them to create more, uh, play area, hard-surface play area. From that, we've got in between those two areas, we have some existing paving, and then we have what we're calling the soft-surface play. Gathering up, right now, the equipment is kind of spread out all around, hard to monitor. Uh, so, we've decided to look at that area as being an area where we could put all of the soft-surface play and, and have a, um, a better way of monitoring the children. The unique thing is, as you can see, we've kind of expanded the park, uh, play to the south, which looks like that might be the primary lower-grade play area. The upper-grade play area might be to the northwest, and there are soft surfaces between the two groups. Along with that, we wanted to save as much of the site as possible for, um, additional activities. As you can see, right now, we have a full-size soccer field still on that site, so soccer can be very, uh, easily used on that site. It brings the parking on weekends when the soccer's being used back to that location, so it's easy for, uh, community members to be able to park it back there and utilize that soccer facility, along with, if they have kids, younger kids, they can be playing on the playground, they can be monitoring their children, along with having that, some of their older children being able to play soccer there on the field. So, on, on the site, that was one of the critical aspects that we talked about was, how do we organize the site so we can separate it and still use all of those pieces? That's why we, we really look to the south for the, the building, south, and to the east of the building. Um, and that's where you see the new addition, the blue area, and, uh, we'll go through more of that. The tan area, again, is the existing, existing facility. So, when we look at the replacement of the, uh, blacktop, everything to the north will be replaced, the soft surface will be replaced, the, um, area that is paved now will be recoded, and then there'll be a little addition to the south and the sidewalk that goes around to the, to the front. The front parking lot at this time will not be replaced, but will be able to be modified in future additions. And you'll see that in the next slide, because the next slide's going to depict, this was Phase One, this is what is, fits under the $3 million budget. In Phase Two, or as we look at, how would this building grow to a two-track?
Go to a three-track.
Wait, wait, let's go, let's go to detail, detail on the, the one-track first. Okay. Yeah. So, as we started looking at it, as you can see, we've got two classrooms per grade, two kindergartens, two firsts, two seconds, two thirds, two fours, two fifths. They're all in 910 square rooms, so they're all in large rooms. The three rooms they used now, which are smaller rooms, in this original concept was 740-some square feet, and they were going to use that as music, special ed, and then divide those up into some more special ed areas. This was the original concept. As we went into design development, you'll see that has, has changed. So, each step we worked through, we continued to refine the plan and refine, well, uh, how the building was being laid out. We do have bathrooms that are sized appropriate for the entire wing. We have lockers for every one of the students in there, and, um, we have sinks and, um, and everything, and water in each one of those classrooms.
Let's go to two-track. Can you get it so it takes a little bit?
Okay. So, in, as we started to look at how we got this Phase One, which is in the light blue, and then we could look at how we could phase in next phases to the building. One of the things that was, was talked about was bringing a new gymnasium and separating the gymnasium from the cafeteria, and bringing that up to the front of the building where kids, uh, community members and students come into the building. So, we created a new en, a new entrance and expanded the office to create a secure, you can see the red line goes through the office, so you have a secured office when people walk through the office to get in, into the building. We have bathrooms, a community room, a gymnasium, and storage, and the cafeteria right all off of that front entrance. So, what happens is, is if it is being utilized by the community, you can shut off the doors by the cafeteria, shut off the doors by the kindergarten, and they can use the front half of that facility without going in the more quiet academic area. Uh, much easier for the administration to control the building for community use. As we continue to develop the, the other areas on, on a two-track building, as we built the new gymnasium, we had looked at then going back into the existing gymnasium and dividing that up into both two 900-plus square classrooms and a library in that area. Again, that is outside exposure, so we can add windows and lights into that, into that area, and really creates a, a good, uh, academic classroom area. So, this provided all of the things they needed in a two-track. The reason why we had, uh, you see this as being a full two-track is, if you look at our new addition, art and music comes to the inside. In the original plan, um, music was in the art inside, but art was still in the multi-level building where art is presently now. So, this brought everything up to that same floor level and really uses the oldest part of the building as flex rooms, flex classrooms, where it could be flexible for special education programs, or it could be overruns if there's a grade, let's say the third grade has three classrooms one year, and they need that extra space that gives them that flexible room for that program. So, in a two-track building, we really brought everything to the front with the gymnasium and the, and the cafeteria and the community areas up front. As, as we go to the, uh, three-track facility, when we looked at the three-track facility, that is where we had looked at removing the older two-story section that's half-level up, half-level down, and providing some additional office facility for specialty people and adding classrooms there. Uh, we then also, in the three-track, completed, uh, the gymnasium with two more classrooms, adding classrooms to the west end of the building, adding a library in between both the, uh, intermediate-level students, between the, um, two, three, four, five, and the kindergarten run group, so that they flow from two different directions into the library. In both of the two-track and in the three-track plan, you'll notice that all the busy, uh, community activities and noisy activities are to the east side of the site, and all the more quiet academic areas are to the west side of the site, creating a better atmosphere for students to learn in the quiet atmosphere and giving them those, uh, activity spaces. So, it, in this, uh, plan, it really, uh, shows that we can make that a full three-track facility and keep the site and, uh, everything functioning as it was. That, this was our, this was our concepts to look at it. The committee worked very hard on, you know, all of those different aspects of what were their highest priorities. Again, priority number one was to get those kids in classrooms. We started off with a six, six-classroom addition, but we actually have seven now. As we were working through it, we felt that we needed those seven classrooms. We felt those three, uh, uh, existing classrooms in the middle of the building were too small, without windows, and, uh, were areas that served the district better as being those specialty-type rooms, where students are in and out of them all day long, rather than in that classroom all day. And so, that's how that, a lot of those concepts, uh, were set up. Do you have any questions?
I have a couple. The first is, um, for the, for the full three-track, one of the things that, that I heard earlier was that we were going to build the, the two-track and then go up if we were going to do a three-track. So, but that's how this is.
No.
Okay. So, is that cost, or?
Um, the, the one area that we felt was, is as we started to look at going up, is the elevators and how that spread out on the site. And one of the things, if this would have taken up, the three-track took up too much room on the site, it would have made more sense to go up. But because of the way the site, original site plan laid out, it seemed like this was an easier way to, uh, uh, keep the cost down on a two-track, and also, um, give you a little better chance of expanding it smaller portions at a time, because now, in this situation, we built this, build the seven classrooms, you now could do the gym as one item, you could do the office and front end as one item, you could do the renovation of the old gym as one item. So, it gives you a little better choices as a board to say, we can't go from being what we are now to a full three-track, but we have different opportunities to make incremental steps to get there.
And if, if the population grows in, in, um, that area, that opportunity could present itself, but at present time, uh, the, the base that you're going to show is, is really the only portion that we're proceeding with.
And that fits in the budget? The two, the, yeah, okay.
What's in the budget, right.
All right.
Mm-hmm. And without borrowing any money whatsoever, except for the, uh, the portion that is regarding the energy retrofit, so. It's actually projected just over. Is that correct? 125?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, if bids end up coming in very close to what anticipated, then we will, as a committee, have to decide what we're going to cut to, to get enough of the money, maybe.
Our goal is to live within the established TIF funds plus the leftover funds from, from the sale of Green Meadow.
Okay. We'll go to the design development. Now, maybe I can walk up there if you'd mind. So, we, then, after coming up with the concept, we brought all the engineers onboard to start developing the, the engineer concepts and how they were going to look at each area and start developing their area. Um, this is the civil engineering drawing, and what we had looked at in this area is, how's the water going to flow? Uh, it's always a big area. So, what, um, they've looked at is basically from this point east, the water flows east. From this point here, the water flows west. Um, with the new, new facility, we've looked at, um, picking up the water off the roof and being able to drain it out into the, um, the ditch in front of the school, and, uh, right now, they are saying that is fine with them, uh, but what we're looking at is then taking this back parking area and all the hard surface and gathering it together and bringing it down to a detention area. Uh, we've talked about considerably about where this detention area went. We talked about to the west, we talked about to the south, uh, we talked about in that little strip, I think we talked about every spot we could put it, and we, we do know that by grade, everything runs off right here. This is the lowest point in the site. So, we had looked at bringing up all of that water and controlling that water at this location, and then leading it off to that area. We kept it on the other side of that tree, the trees there, so that it became a, a kind of a protected area of the site. It's far enough away from soccer, far enough away from the playground, but it's a, a efficient way of handling the water. Now, as we, um, move more than one acre of land on this, we do, will have to have that detention area.
We, um, we should note the fact that the parcel is really that unique shape. There's a private residence that was obviously, um, uh, that obviously exists that creates, uh, that is not district property, only that peninsula that extends out back to the road is, uh, school district property. The rest of the other square is, um, is a privately held piece, held piece of property and a family residence.
At first, we thought the thing went this way, but until we did a little more research, we found that the district actually owns that 50-foot strip all the way back to the road again. Again, you can see some of the same things that we've got the parking, the sidewalks in that, that area, the soft-surface play area here. Again, kids can come out both that direction and this direction to come to the playground, so it really, uh, works well. Uh, again, our utilities come in here. One of the things that we will be doing as we come in and we're relocating everything, everything's going to go underground. Right now, um, we have overhead power and that, that'll all be underground at the end. We'll have all-new light in that, uh, parking lot all the way across the top, so it'll be a well-lit area all the way across for that drop-off area, um, and, uh, that will all create a very good entrance into the, the facility itself. As we go to the overall building, um, again, you can see the, the classrooms. Uh, one of the things that we have done, because we really talked about in Phase One, these are classrooms, we do have, uh, windows in both areas here and here to create natural light. So, this will have natural light directly out. We have actually windows, higher windows into the hallway, and then windows outside, so that creates natural light into this room. So, every one of these rooms has natural light going into each one of the rooms, uh, to provide natural light in, in those. We are showing lockers throughout this area to provide lockers for every student in that area. One of the things we talked about was, you know, lockers are the hulks you have now, and they felt with the lockers, it really separates the students' materials, uh, keeps it much more uniform, much cleaner in the hallway, and, uh, a much safer environment for those, for those students. Um, again, you can see that we enter and exit on both sides. We are going to provide a firewall between this new facility and the existing facility, so there will be a fire separation, and that, that set of doors will be a set of fire doors. As we go in and looked at remodeling in here, we divided one classroom into two special ed areas. We do, uh, opened up that room as the, uh, full music room. Uh, on this area, we've actually developed it so that we can open up some space out of the, uh, library. One of the things that was talked about a lot was with, uh, the other grades coming to the building, that they're going to need more library space, and some of the books are going to change, so they're going to get more books because of the, the students there. So, to move that, uh, computer area into a, a new computer area that's off the library, but then off the hallway, would provide a better access for both teachers and a better, um, access for the library and the use in the library itself. Up here, we're creating a, a small classroom, a, a small office, again, for those specialty people. One of the things that happens in the office is we have our, uh, an office and a health room, uh, and for those people that come in that are specialists, psychologists, social workers, or anyone that comes into the building from the district has nowhere to go. And so, we provided a spot here that they can go and then meet with students on a one-to-one basis, or even, then we talked about empty meetings and parent meetings and all those other activities that they don't really have a spot, uh, to do that in, in the facility. So, that would, um, create that area. So, and this is, this is what the, um, area that is going to be done. There were two things that we talked about to expand that that weren't part of the project, but we were looking at bidding them as alternates. One is to go back and put lockers in the existing part of the building for these students, so that everybody would have lockers. So, that would be one of the additional items that we'll be looking at in the bid process, to add the lockers to that area. The other one that was talked a lot about was changing the face of the building. And because we're building to the front of the building, because of the new addition, could we update the look of the building and kind of create, uh, that building? So, we looked at the new facility, and we also talked about the replacement of the windows into the library. Right now, I believe you've got replacement of the windows, but not the wall. That, um, you've got three windows in that, uh, library right now, and that's in the-
Energy efficiency upgrade.
Energy efficient upgrade, but we had looked at removing that whole existing wall that they put probably a 50s or 60s. When did they enclose that? Does anyone know? They enclosed that, they took all the windows out and built a wood wall in there. So, we had looked at coming back and really doing a modern curtain wall, glass, high-efficiency glass, everything else to create a better atmosphere, opening up the front of the building again, and creating that, uh, the image that it had at one time, and then, uh, was removed at, at one point. So, those were the things that we had looked at in that area to try to address the overall building itself. To give you an idea of, uh, what, uh, we had looked at, again, this is a small perspective of a classroom. Uh, we had looked at the cabinetry in the classroom, sinks in every room, storage in every room, um, again, that, those types of things. We talked about the layout of the room with, uh, the main entrance being at this point, the main board with the, um, smart board being at the front of the room. Um, on the edge, having, being a location for a teacher's desk in the teacher's area. Um, with that, we looked at, um, some storage for the teacher area. We also looked at the storage across the front with the sink, the, uh, countertop and upper, our tall storage cabinets in the corner. Again, giving a, a good layout to the room. Again, with windows out to the south, give us good natural light into that facility. So, that's what all of the classrooms are basically laid out, so they're consistent. Um, in the bathrooms themselves, uh, we, we created the bathroom facility, again, that everyone can use. Along with that, we created a custodial closet and a single bathroom in this location. One of the reasons why we, uh, looked at the single bathroom is there's at times with the younger children, a staff member might have to help that student in that, uh, area, and rather than having to go to the main bathrooms, they've got a bathroom that they can take that student in and work with them. It also doubles for staff area for a bathroom, for the staff area in that, uh, area also. In the future, as you go to two and three-track, um, these could be art and music. Uh, so, what we had provided is storage areas for art, music, music in the future, but for now, a storage area for the two kindergartens. Kindergartens have a lot of larger equipment, so this creates an area for them to be able to store some of those, uh, larger items in there. And we also put a small resource area that will have air in it and be able to be utilized for, um, independent pullouts with children and testing and those types of things that will help with this, uh, this overall area. help with this overall area. So that happened in those areas in the classroom. The other thing that we had looked at is where the mechanical space would be. We have a regular stair going up and over the bathrooms will be a mechanical space where the air handling unit will be maintained. And then that air handling comes out into the hallways and goes into the classrooms. We'll show you a schematic of how that system's going to work in a few seconds. With that, we have provided two storage rooms on the end of the bathroom that then allows, whether this is a first grade, kindergarten, second grade, whatever grade levels these might be, they then can share some larger storage areas to provide that storage. It's one thing we always hear, we heard a lot about is we have no storage. And this is going to provide some storage for each one of the grade levels to really provide that in this new facility.
Excuse me, on that diagram in the lower left-hand corner where you pointed out the existence of the sink and then to the right of that, far right of that, you mentioned two tall cabinets.
Yes.
What would be to the left of that sink?
To the left, this is open.
Okay.
So it's a sink. One of the things that we will see and we kind of modeled it after Oaklawn. And that's because one of the things they talked about was at the end of the sink, the kids just don't come up to this side of the sink, they also come up to this side of the sink. Because they get so many kids gathered around the sink that as they flow into the sink, it gives them more space for kids to access the sink. And that's why you'll see the sink on the end because it gives them better access. As we start to look at the elevations of the building, we did talk about this was going to be the new front of the facility. So we had looked at the new area as being pitched similar to the pitched area of the existing library IMC. So to add some of those elements, as we look at the library, again, bringing in those windows, the pattern of the windows, we maintain in our new addition along with this is the south elevation, that same pattern would come through so it would really start to blend the building together. Not only the existing front, but now our new addition will blend the brick so that it'll match that area. The other thing that we looked at was, talked a lot about was getting natural light. So some of the things that we did is, as you see that like on this wall here and that wall there that goes into those little alcoves, we actually put high windows over the top lockers to get some natural light into the hallways. So this will be a very bright area, bright school with a lot of natural light coming, flowing into all of those areas. With that, as we're in through the design development committee, we talked about, you know, how high should those windows be in that classroom that overlooks the hallway and then overlooks the new light? So that's what we had established that they're going to be about 48 inches high. So when a student is sitting, they don't see kids walking down the hallway, but they get that natural light to flow into their room. And a teacher standing by the window or walking over to the window can see what's going on and monitor what's happening in the hallways so that they can monitor that. We also looked at getting some bookshelves right underneath all the windows areas and that those would be more of an important item, but that we could have that bookshelf area there. We looked at the actual cabinetry in every one of those classrooms. We start off with a tall teacher's locker, which is both a tall locker with adjustable shelves, a place for coat or other things to hang in that area, a locking cabinet. Then the next one is a tall cabinet with adjustable shelves. We have countertop with a sink on the end and then upper cabinets above all of those, above that countertop. In the lockers themselves, we looked at the way the lockers would be setting. We looked at the Oaklawn model again and they liked that idea of having them floating off the floor so it was easier to clean the floor. They can't put the boots down there on the floor when they're wet, so it's easier to not have all that mess inside the lockers. So those were some of the things that we had talked about. We'll have slope tops on the lockers. We're looking at tackable surface above all the lockers, so there'll be a lot of tackable surface out in the hallway. Again, very similar to Oaklawn. Here is what we were talking about when we talked about the heating and ventilation system. What we had looked at is we have the mechanic room that sits here that we can go up the steps, go into the mechanical air handling unit. That unit will come out and run down the hallway with VAV boxes down the hallway supplying each room with their own VAV box that independently control each one of those rooms along with those two rooms. We are also running the line out to here and having individual VAV boxes coming back in and providing the air in that existing facility. One of the things this does is there is, in our budget, all of these things are included, but you also have in your
Energy efficiency.
Energy efficiency model, the renovation of these areas. They were going to be unit ventilators in every one of these rooms. We'll now not need those unit ventilators because we'll run it off this system. The other thing we talked about in this one was the size of this unit. And we designed that unit to be large enough to actually handle the end of this wing if that would ever be built. So that you wouldn't have to add another mechanical room here if you continued out and finished out that area. The advantage to now was something we looked at as an option again, was to then take this and actually provide the mechanical system for the gymnasium or for the library and then use an air system rather than the VAV. Right now, it's VAVs and this would put a VAV system, air system. We looked at the cost difference and I think there's a $45,000 in your budget for this and I think this one was 36 to put it into there. So it's some options that we can use to save money on one side and provide a better quality air in the facility by just moving some things around. So we talked about a lot of those types of things, is how we could utilize the maintenance budget and the new building to make sure that the building was designed the proper way. Is it the last one? We want to go to, we'll show you the, give you an idea of what it feels like. Oh, wait, let's do cost first. Got cost. Sorry. So our addition is 11,070 square feet. We have a 1,155 square foot mechanical room that's up above. Again, we're renovating 2,305 square feet of those existing three classrooms. From that, we went through engineers, developed their budgets on the site with all soft surface play, with all of the items, the paving, utilities, that came into about $433,000. As we look at the general conditions or the general construction work with demolition, foundations, structure, roofing and material rough carpentry, interior finishes and all the equipment, that came in at about 1.41 million in that area. As we started to look at mechanical, plumbing, heating, electrical, 739. So our subtotal of the project was about 2,570, 2,587,000 along with contingency and fees and a $75,000 allowance for furniture in the facility. Any questions? Let's go to the rendering or to the image if you can. Okay. Okay. Bring it back for a second. Can you? Okay. So you can see with the glass changed here and then you can see that we're looking at a pitched area over the top to give you the idea of what the feeling of the building is. This sidewalk's going to come up and go all the way around. So when kids get out of their car in front, they can walk on the sidewalk and walk around. Or if they get out of a bus, they kind of go around the other way. They can get to the playground from either direction. Again, entrance to this side, if the kids are coming out of their car, they can go right into the primary area or they can go in the front doors by the office area. Again, we looked at that pitched area to kind of blend in with the pitched area of the existing building. Again, we'd have a lot of glass into the main entrance. As you can see up here on the edges, we're bringing natural light into the hallway, it's hallway and entrance itself. As we get into that main hallway, the lockers wrapping up and down, again, getting natural light in up above to bring some light into that space. Again, the alcoves setting the doors back so they have good access into each one of the classrooms. We provide side lights and lights in the door so we get a lot of view into the classrooms themselves. Again, the teacher's desk, again, the light in that area, the sink here on the end and the cabinets wrapping down that area. We talked about the tackable surface across the backboard so they have a lot of tackable surface. That's the door to the storage room. Again, some storage for the back area for the teacher, some storage for books along the front. Again, that teacher's desk with their computer to monitor and operate the smart board at the front of the room. Any other questions? Yes?
I have several. If you can go back to your very first drawing.
Sure.
Way back where. What would happen in that initial drawing with the upper kindergarten room? Would that, would you be making some modifications to that under this plan?
At this time, that upper kindergarten is going to be listed as a flex classroom.
Okay.
One of the things that they talked about was, again, we now met, the first need was to meet the need of the students that are coming back. One of the things that we tried very hard is trying to meet all the needs of special ed. That became difficult. So they talked about having maybe some special ed programs in there for now. We did provide a couple new special ed programs in there, but that was something that they're looking at as more of a flex area.
And under this plan, does anything going to happen with the current art room?
Current art room will stay there until the next phase where art and music then would come back up into here. Go to these two.
Would you do anything to that art room or would it?
Not at this time. The only thing that we talked about was some area for the kiln.
Right. We talked about recapturing the space of the existing boiler room, which is outside the art room and being able to put a kiln into that space.
Because all of the new boiler mechanical things will come back here, so that opens up that space for down below.
Isn't there a bathroom in the upstairs kindergarten?
Yeah, there's two little ones.
What are you doing with those?
Here and here, they're going to stay.
Just leave them, yes. Never have a problem.
Yeah. You know, they looked at their priority as getting everybody into these spaces first.
That makes sense.
And one of the things that was talked about was, in the long run, that will be phased out. If you look at phase three, that someday that would be where you become a three-track could be gone.
Other than that, middle section where they're going to change some of that around, there's very little being done to the rest of the building. I mean, if we can afford it, we're going to look at maybe lockers, you know, possibly maybe an upgrade of cabinetry if we can afford it, but for the most part, we're leaving the whole rest of the building.
Yeah, as is, sure.
As part of the McKinstry project, because these will be happening at the same time, something we talked about was building off of the successful contract for the window installation and retrofitting all the existing windows to match the new windows. Something we had a significant amount of discussion was, is how do we kind of tie this building together so it doesn't look like we just plunked a building next to an existing building? We know we can't renovate all of the old building, but one of the little things we can do through the McKinstry project that we had already funded and intended on doing as part of our promise to the public was looking at new entrances, new windows, trying to use some common sense approach to use that money that's already allocated for that to try to tie the building together so it looks like it was.
And the existing windows are in terrible shape.
Yes.
So if we were going to be putting in new windows
Save us some money.
And we wouldn't try and match what they're doing.
Of course.
Is sort of ludicrous. Why wouldn't you, given the opportunity, why wouldn't you try?
That's why our size of our new windows are the same proportions as what they are so that we can match those windows up.
Makes perfect sense.
Then the last question I had was on that new soft surface playground area. Can you define for me what that surface might be made of?
Right now, they have that as wood chips.
Okay.
So this would be a wood, right now it's pea gravel and they want to take that out and get wood chips in that area.
Okay.
And one of the things that we've done here is, as you can see, the hard surface is there and we actually wrap the hard surface around. It confines where that is. It also provides better handicap accessibility all the way around the playground area.
Okay. So with that kind of surface, that would mean that unless the snow melts in the winter, that area probably wouldn't be very accessible for kids, would it?
Actually, if you look at this little diagram, he's got these things in here.
Okay.
That's under drains that go back to the place. So this has all underdraining and as soon as that starts to melt, there's pipes underground that pick up all that water, move that out and bring it out to this pond so that will keep that soft surface play area usable more times of the year, even after rains.
The kids at Oakwood use theirs all winter long. They've got wood chips throughout the nine minutes all covered in.
I know they have at Washington and I know they have at Jacob Shapiro. I was just at Oaklawn on Friday and that wasn't the case. That soft surface under the playground area, the playground equipment was not being used. And it was explained to me that the children would track snow onto the ramps and level surfaces and that would make it slippery, so they weren't allowed to play there.
Sure. And the, in that exposure of being really, for winter, south, southwest exposure is the most ideal location for quick snow melt.
Oh, yeah.
We talked a lot about was, now we have this big parking lot here where we plow the snow to.
Yeah.
So we talked about keeping it open and getting it plowed and getting it down here behind. We are moving the shed. The shed sits about here right now. That shed will get moved back off to the end of the parking lot. We looked at plowing snow this direction and having that out in that area. And that way, when that melts, it's going to run that way across the site and not back towards the building.
Is that within your budget or are you taking that out of yours?
Totally.
They're moving the shed.
That's in the budget, it's in the budget.
It's in your budget.
It's in our budget.
Would there be any kind of fencing around that pond for safety purposes?
That was the discussion that we've had. It really depends on the district's insurance policies. Most insurance companies do not want fences. What happens in the pond is there's, as it goes in, it goes in about maybe a foot, foot deep, which is called the safety shelf. And it goes along for a while for the safety shelf and it slowly gets deeper to the middle. So most of these are designed with that safety shelf in. The reason a lot of insurance companies talk about not putting fences on is the kids will climb the fence, but it's harder for the people that's maybe having to go in and help somebody get over that fence.
And the surface below for absorption will be relatively rapid after heavy rains. It's slowed down in winter by ice and freezing and refreezing, but as far as after rains, each of those ponds drain or soak away very fast.
And if you notice, they do have an exit here so that water does run out. It just runs out at the pace the VNR wants that water to run off, the ear site at. The VNR just, it just works with us to develop that number on how much water we can run off and how fast. we can run off and how fast we can run off.
And in heavy rain experiences, most recently just back here, you can have a lake at nine o'clock in the morning, and you can, and the lake is all gone, and the geese wonder where it went to at four o'clock. So.
Thank you.
Other questions? All right, seeing none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next workshop is paraprofessional in food service salary structure. Mike Knowl and Sush Noor and Peggy West.
Good evening. We're going to do a food service salary structure workshop, a paraprofessional salary structure workshop and administrative staff. And Peggy's going to primarily take the lead on the food service and Sue and the paras and myself and the administrators. So Peggy, you're up.
First of all, thank you for hearing me tonight. I have had a group of people working on this since December last year, so I'm bringing it to you, so that's a good thing. We do have a food service committee that exists of three regular staff people, the two supervisors and myself. And we started talking about the whole salary matrix schedule, whatever you wanna call it, way back in December. Some of you know I've worked here a long time, and I've had the privilege of being on the bargaining team and watching how these salary schedules basically morph over the years and how we add percentages. Some of the things of the old schedule sort of troubled me. We have a natural progression in our department where people go from being a cook helper elementary school, and they move to the top of that schedule, whatever that is, and they get a promotion, and they go to the cook helper, middle school, high school, and they work their way through that, and then eventually they get to be an assistant cook, and they work through their way through that. And that's pretty typical. I've seen a lot of people do that. Under the current or the old salary schedule, when people move from being a cook helper elementary school to a cook helper middle school, instead of starting at step one, they actually ended up starting at about step three. So you then go step three and step four, and then a couple years later, you might go to the assistant cook position. And of course, then you don't start at step one there either. You end up starting at step three. And it appears that just over the years, I'm not sure exactly how it started, but we lost the idea that you have a natural progression going through the salary schedule along with your experience. So that was one of the things that I had asked this group to look at, to see if we could show a natural progression of moving through the salary matrix based on your experience and your jobs so that the more responsibility you had in a position, the more you got paid for that position. So that was essentially how we came together and came up with the new grid, the new matrix. The other thing that we had looked at was basically moving the steps to an every other year. We have a large staff, eighty to ninety people on staff, and it's difficult to provide a performance review for every single employee. So we have in our department for years done an every other year schedule. And with this new, the new schedule, we could actually do an every other year, so half of the staff basically would be moving if they're moving through the salary schedule, and set it up such that a performance review would be done probably about six weeks, something like that, prior to them moving on the next step. So. I should say that the salary schedule as we proposed actually would provide an increase in pay for all staff members except for twelve. And these twelve people were a part of being a cook helper prior to the cook helper position being split between cook helper elementary and cook helper middle school. So we're probably going back, I don't know, eight, ten, twelve years, something like that. And those positions are all basically being paid someplace in the range of a cook helper middle school, high school, at the very top end and working in an elementary school environment.
Questions for Peggy?
Yeah. I have two questions. Sure. Approximately, how many hours per week would a cook helper work? And would an assistant cook or a cook work?
All the cooks work seven and a half hours.
A day?
Mm-hmm. Six of the assistant cooks work 7.25 hours. There is one assistant cook that works four hours, one that works five and a half hours, and two that work three and a half hours. There are two cook helper, middle school, high school people that work seven and a half hours. And for the most part, the rest of those people work someplace between three and a half hours and five. I think it's five. And then, for the most part, the cook helper elementary school people work someplace between one and a half hours and two. And the folks at Oaklawn work 3.25 hours.
I'm impressed.
I don't know how many times.
So it sounds like some of the people, the ones who work 7.25 or seven and a half hours a day would be thirty, above thirty-five hours a week. And you'd have others who would be maybe in the seventeen-hour range or something like that.
Yeah, that sounds awful.
Okay.
Yeah, our full-time staff is the six hours or more. Those are the folks that work seven and a quarter and seven and a half, and there are fourteen of those.
Okay, thank you.
Everyone else is considered restful.
And then my second question is on the staff report under the Section Five on the Budget Financial Impact. You show what the impact would be the first year, but wouldn't that dollar amount carry into subsequent years? I mean, this isn't a one-time-only expense, is it?
No, it's correct. Okay. Yes, and actually, the eleven thousand two hundred fifty is reflective of about half of this because, half of this total package, because we wouldn't start it until second semester, basically.
So then in year two, year three, if everything else stayed the same, which it won't, but if it were, then it would be in the twenty-two.
Twenty-two thousand dollar range.
And the USDA has, a couple of years ago, made a law that you have to raise your food prices every year until your full-priced meal cost equals the subsidy to your free meals. And ours currently isn't there, so every year we have to raise prices by the USDA rules. And so some of those price increases will be what will help fund this.
So then doesn't participation go down?
A little bit. We've seen a little evidence, kind of a lot of stuff.
Okay.
And it's gone down. Between raising prices and all of the new rules, where you're paying more.
So your price has to be the same as the price of the subsidy?
Right.
But even if you just have like one person rather than a hundred buying it at this price, that's, they don't care.
The federal government subsidizes full-priced meals, reduced-priced meals, and free meals. And they subsidize free meals the most, and then obviously reduce the less, and then full-price less. They don't want your full-priced students subsidized, no, they don't want your free students subsidizing your full-priced students. So the amount that you charge your full-priced students has to be at least equal to or greater than what the subsidy is for free meals.
How do they determine that? How do they determine the subsidy cost?
Every year, the federal government comes out with what the reversible amount is per meal.
And is that close to what it costs us to make?
It's usually CPI, that's the raise.
But the cost itself for the meal?
I don't know what the subsidy for a free meal is right off.
Three dollars.
Is that what it costs to make a meal?
Cost to make a meal, it's actually less than that. I wanna say like two eighty-seven or something.
And what do we charge for full price?
Two fifteen for elementary, two twenty-five for middle, and two thirty-five for high.
So we gotta get that to three.
Every year you have to raise your food prices so that what you charge your full-priced students includes that federal subsidy. And every year that federal subsidy goes up.
Yes, except for on the full-priced meals. That's basically leveled off, which doesn't help our situation either.
And Peggy outlined for you the unique and odd number of hours. And part of that is Peggy's work to adjust to be within what the market demand is in number of hours, in making those adjustments so she lives closer to within the budget. And so the oddity of times, in those changing times, is her adjusting to demand on number of meals served. And so her quality management of that is monitoring it. Always runs a little behind it, but it's, that's the reality because we also wanna be able to deliver the meals as needed and not overcut the staff hours that we don't produce enough meals. And that's a bit of the issue that's always out there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions for Peggy?
Next, the paraprofessionals. We started meeting with the paraprofessionals. I should've looked at them, it seems like a long time.
Six months now, maybe.
Paraprofessionals, and they approached us saying that they believe that their wage there was considerably off of, or it should be considering how the responsibilities have changed over time, how the demands on their job have changed over time. So far, they've seen our necks. And we've sat with those groups, and we've sat through several meeting sessions with that group to talk about how their jobs have changed, how the demands on their jobs have changed. And we used the resources of Davis and Philpott as a few districts are very. Yeah, that's a good word. Sheraton of our neighboring districts and with their paraprofessionals, okay. We also looked at other conditions as well to see if our custodians and clerical were as out of sync as our paraprofessionals are. As you can see from in the packet, that our beginning wage for our paraprofessionals is pretty much in the ballpark. But when you get at the upper end of our wage schedule, which takes twenty-five years to get to, we're almost two dollars out of just the average compared to our comparables. So, but then we also did custodial and clerical. They're not as easy to do comparables for, I mean, a paraprofessional's a paraprofessional for the most part. But when you get into clerical, they have so many different job titles, and every district titles have different things. Same thing with custodial maintenance. I mean, we have a position called fireman two. I mean, I didn't even know what that was. And so, and I've never heard of it called that before. That's a building-level custodian. So every district has a variety of different positions, and they all call them different things. So I think our little committee decided that we need to take a closer look at those two groups. Those two groups don't appear to be out of sync as much as the paraprofessionals and the food services were. Clerical is a little bit out of sync, but not as much. And again, we wanna look at that a little closer so we can do more of an apples-to-apples comparison with other districts. So that's why we really wanted to focus on the paraprofessional group. And so we came up with a salary schedule. Also, their salary schedule is just really unusual. And I'm sure back, I don't know how far back, that they negotiated that salary schedule, but essentially, there's just a starting wage. You start at whatever the starting wage is, and you don't get any kind of increase other than a CPI until you reach those longevity steps where like, which were like at year six, year eleven, sixteen, twenty-one, and twenty-five is the only time you got any kind of a step increase. So there's essentially no salary matrix like there are with custodial or clerical. So I think from that standpoint, it's also a little unfair for that group of people. So what we did was came up with a schedule that even though it's much longer, it's like thirteen years, but it's down to twenty-five years, and the steps aren't affordable, in my opinion. And that was included in your packet as well. It's a brief history of how we got to this point with this group.
Is there any other thing to add? Are you good on the committee?
Well, I guess for myself, going through this, I think that what Mike and Sue came up with is a much more fair comparison. The thing that struck me on this was we have a very high turnover rate for paraprofessionals on the first couple of years. Twenty-eight percent of our paras right now have zero to one-year experience. But balancing that, though, is forty-seven percent of our paras have between six and fifteen years. So if our goal is attraction and retention, it would be nice to sit there and try to make sure that those people with the experience stick around. The paras are in the room, they have their hands on the kids. Special needs programs and stuff, all these things are a lot different than what they were twenty-five years ago when they, you know. So I think what they did with this too, to counterbalance this and make this more affordable and sustainable, is didn't, we lowered the.
We lowered the starting salary.
Lowered the starting salary from twelve eighty-two to twelve because, well, we have that high turnover rate, twenty-eight percent. So you're gonna be able to probably recoup some of this money while people we do hire will actually be able to see something laid out where instead of getting like a nickel in seven years, that you're going to get roughly like a quarter, I think it's a quarter a year, so that there's some incentive to actually stick with this instead of just, you know, a nickel for six years work as an increase, is kind of ludicrous, you know.
Well, and if we find that, if Mike has a hard time hiring people at twelve dollars an hour down the road, we can always do what we're looking to do with our teacher's salary schedule, eventually just lock those steps off. So we end up, but now, you know, that twelve dollars is pretty much in the ballpark with what other districts are starting to paraprofessionals.
That's what I was going to say. That twelve dollars was actually the median in the districts we've looked at. So, yeah, so we were in a hunt with that. And just like at the upper end where we were short, you know, I mean, that's what the information indicated to us, so that's how we responded to the information.
The other things we can do is, you know, right now, because we have a salary schedule now, or we're proposing a salary schedule, the steps every year are gonna cost a little bit more than what it's costing now, obviously. But eventually, those, you know, in four years, those people, there's gonna be a whole chunk of people who are gonna max out on the new schedule so that the step increases are gonna cost considerably less. So maybe at that point, you can look at maybe increasing the increments and shortening that thirteen years. But until you get to that point where you've maxed out a bunch of people to work with your schedule, it has to be affordable.
One of the things that struck me about the old system currently, with the beginning salary of twelve dollars and eighty-two cents an hour and maxing out at twenty-five years, only roughly what, seventy, eighty-six cents more than that, that's only about a six percent differential over twenty-five years.
That's pretty incredible.
That's pretty incredible. I've had people talk to me about having left the district because they couldn't afford this. They can make more money working at a local retail store. They could make more money working at a local retail store, discount store.
I was just going to say, think of graduate assistants on campus.
They'd work.
Make more and get health insurance. And they don't have, they're working on degrees.
And some of these people do have degrees. Some of them have some post-secondary, post-high school. But this knowledge base and the skill set that many of them bring in terms of working with individual children over a period of years or, or children with parallel needs, I don't want to say like needs, but similar needs, whether that's behavioral or physical, is immeasurable. I mean, they have knowledge base and skill sets in those areas I do not have, and I'm guessing many of us around the table do not have. So as we look at the strategic plan of the district and that, the goal that's listed first has to do with showing respect to teachers, to me, that, that's important, but it's also important that we show respect to all of our employee groups. And to me, it also then ties into the strategic goal related to equity. So I think somewhere on the plan it said it didn't, I think this was the one that said it didn't necessarily fit into the, not directly, but I think it does.
Because you're right, it's that one, the one goal that says we need to, to respect our teachers, it's too bad that, that wasn't written to respect all of our, or show value to all of our employees. So it kind of falls under that umbrella, but not directly. So that's why I put, nothing.
May I just make a comment on this approach this afternoon? I had about a half hour, 45 minutes meeting with, with a long-term para-professional who was very thankful for the board's consideration of, of this, but wanted to point out of, and was understood the incremental small step that this improvement was. But she raised an interesting question of which I would have the answer in the Minnesota perspective, but we don't have the answer here because we don't have a pay equity standard that applies to all public employers. That is that we don't have a pure third-party outside analysis of the responsibility factor from the lowest level employee to the highest level employee in the district and a spectrum of, is there internal equity? Are we paying custodians more than paras for what reason? That's her question. Because applying for a custodial position that then moves along on a salary schedule in much rapid fashion is an incentive for paras who, who would want to choose to, to make a shift in moving away from directly serving children to doing custodial work because it pays more. And yet we would, at that same time, lose that skill factor of working with children. And she raises an interesting, interesting question and I will use my sources to, there is clearly identified, I can tell you in 426 Minnesota school districts, there is a, what is called banding and grading. They have every position that we currently have ranked in order of ranges of compensation based on responsibility in a typical school district. She raised a question that it was obvious that had not surfaced in all the other discussions, but she understood external comparisons and internal harmony within the unit, but how does that unit fit within the greater spectrum of all the other positions we have in the district? And how does that fit? She clearly identified three, three areas. Did not include food service, but she looked at, at clerical and custodial and how do paras fit within the spectrum of how we compensate paraprofessionals differently than, do we pay them more or less, or they know they're being paid less, but is their responsibility not at that same level? And that was, it's an interesting question and I said, I don't know the answer here in Wisconsin and, but I know how that is set up in, in many states, including my past experience in Minnesota, where there is a banding and grading for every single position for a public employer and you could then know whether or not, based on responsibility for your service, what level of responsibility in decision-making. It's called a decision band method that you could identify what, what position should be within ranges compensated greater or lesser than fellow internal positions.
A neighboring district in our area just did a support staff studies just exactly like that. Took every single support staff position, evaluated their job duties and seen over the salary structure based on that. But they paid $30,000 for that, more than that, $50,000 or something?
Yeah.
Okay. Do you think you'd like to take-
No, and I, and I would think that if we, but if we looked at a relative model of how do they really fall out in the normal sense, you could do it without buying the service.
See each other's side.
Well, we did have some, I would say very preliminary conversations about that based on the work that Mr. Bracken did for us because he had done some analysis of custodial maintenance pay custodial. I don't think he included example-
Maintenance was in there too.
Were they? Okay, I forgot.
But yeah, it's hard to tell because they call, they have different titles and different-
Okay. And we had also been given preliminary information regarding secretaries, but felt that of all the employee groups, these two are the ones that we looked at, the paraprofessionals were the most unique among the groups. And then on a parallel path, Peggy West was working on the food service piece, so, and that went to what, facilities and finance at her last meeting? So that's not to say we're not sensitive to those other groups and I think that conversation that you're suggesting should be had at some point compared roles and responsibilities and yet the, the skill sets are so different. I mean, I don't know how to repair, I wouldn't know how to repair much of what the custodians do and I'm not sure that a paraprofessional who works with physically handicapped children would have that either. So what I'm saying is that the skill sets are very different and I, someone smarter than I would have to-
That's, that's why they use a decision band method as opposed to the level of decision-making that needs to be made as opposed to, because that classes skill sets.
Sure. But it's very, it gets you in the head and it gets you in the heart when you're talking with these paraprofessionals, former paraprofessionals who have left the district because they can make more money at a discount, at a discount store or cobbling together a couple of jobs in such places, or they're arguing that their children are receiving free and reduced lunch, they're going to the back to school fair because they can't make ends meet on what this job will pay them, and yet they are so passionate about the work they do with the children in the district that it's, it tells you they want to be here, they want to work with these children, but they have to also look out for their own families.
I think it's important to know that these employees, the majority of them do get a full benefit package. I don't know the exact number versus part-time versus full-time, but a vast majority of them do get full health insurance year-round, dental, like WRS, so they do, I mean, it almost doubles their wages in, in compensation for the benefit package that also goes with the services. And I don't know, Mike, maybe you might be able to have a better idea of how many are full-time versus part-time, but I don't, I don't have that right offhand.
We have about 235 paras total. I remember looking at, because I was looking, I've been studying it because of the Affordable Care Act and what it all means relative to that, that piece of, that piece of information. But I would have to say we probably, at least 275 are benefit eligible, you know, so it's a vast majority.
Then my, I think my last question is on the budget financial impact. You have a figure listed for year one, which I thought was half of-
Right, it's correct, it's half.
Full implementation. And then year two, that number is more than triple the year, the figure in year one.
Because the first year, we're just getting people this year to the closest number to where they are now. So someone might be at 12, I will say that. The highest person's 1369, so they would be moved to 1375. So they're not getting a full quarter. So they're only getting a step closest to the nearest number. And so the reason it's so much more next year is because it's a full year and it's a full quarter step.
Thank you. And in your explanation, which I thought was very good in your, in terms of your, the staff report, the two of you put together, you noted that the funding for this would come from money, savings realized from the health insurance. And we know there's no guarantee on savings and health insurance in the future, so you have shared with us in the meet and confer with the paraprofessionals that you do feel this is sustainable, correct?
I hope so. I mean, and part of it is, is, you know, you're going to get each other your crystal balls, who knows what's, what's going to happen in January? And I think that there are some big budget decisions that we should put on hold until we find out what the governor's going to propose in January, but something like this where I think means a lot to our employees and it's all about keeping quality employees, I think we have to find a way to sustain this.
Thank you. Thank you for both of you for your work for that.
Yes, very much so.
Thank you too for the work you do in your committees. Any other questions? Do you have more? Any other questions for you? All right, thank you very much. Last one is the most of salary range and adjustments, Mike Mills.
I'm going to go a little old school with a handout here, I'm sorry.
What?
Is it a test?
No, no spirit duplicator anymore. If you have one, that's all you have else.
No, don't tell them. Okay, looking at this, first of all, board policy 223-1 rule indicates that every other year, the HR department should do a market study of the administrative salary ranges and it also indicates the 11 schools that we are to look at comparables with. And those 11 schools, if I can quickly rattle them off, are Janesville, Sheboygan, Green Bay, Nina, Fond du Lac, Eau Claire, La Crosse, Wassa, West Bend, and Abidu Akashah. Those are the schools. And so we did this, we did, we did conduct this study and we conducted it back in May and June of 14 and, and I'm here to bring it forward to you this evening. And if we open this up to, actually, page one of the study, so it's about five pages in, we'll, we'll look at that first of all, about five pages in, I think it was. And the school districts are listed on the left-hand side and let's just look at the elementary schools. So like, let's say Appleton, and Appleton has an average of $95,200. So Appleton, I think, has, you know, about 20 elementary schools and the average of those elementary school principals' salary is $95,200. And then you can see all the averages all the way down for elementary and the range average, you take all those 11, all those 11 schools and the range average is 91.7 and then right below that I have the Oshkosh average of our elementary principals', which is 85.5. Right next to those numbers in the elementary column with the asterix are the years of service. Now, that is, what I had to do was get years of service in their current elementary position, in their current position, because when you would call a school district, you'd say, how many years of service does, and this is the example I used, how many years of service does Sue Shnor have? And we'd look at our system and it shows two years because she's in her second year here in Oshkosh. The reality is she has like 29 or 30 years, you know? So I couldn't ask people to go into their personnel files to investigate all that information, so I had to go with their current years in the position. So as you look down the, the asterix for all the years, that, that average is 6.9 for those 11 districts. And by the way, I didn't get Green Bay's, as you can see, and I didn't get Sheboygan's and I didn't get Janesville. They just didn't get back to me and we weren't able to connect, so, but I did get eight of the 11. So you're just, when you still, when you look at the elementary, the range average is 6.9 years is what I have and the Oshkosh average is 4.7. So, so that's how we look at it all the way across. We look at the middle school and basically I would jump down to the middle school average of those 11 schools is $100,000. The Oshkosh average is like 94. The number of years of experience in the middle school principal position is 5.7 and here in Oshkosh at 7.4. You can see the high school average is $111,000. Our average here in Oshkosh is about $102.5 and the years of service in, in the average is 4.8 and here in Oshkosh is two. Jackie and Erin are pretty new to their principalships. High school APs, where the average is about $88,000. Here, here in Oshkosh, we're about $76,000 and you can see the years of experience there is, is more in the 11 schools and we're at 2.8 in our, in our APs. I think our APs, two are in their second year, one's in his third and one's in his fourth as APs here in Oshkosh. When you look at the next box there for elementary ranges, middle school ranges, high school and high school APs, the elementary range is proposed, we proposed to keep it the same. The ACC committee decided that we ought to keep that the same, even though it went down slightly. It went down a little bit with the study, they wanted to keep it the same. The middle school, the high school and the high school APs, all of those proposed ranges went up with the middle school and the high school APs slightly, but the high school principalship range went up pretty, pretty substantially and I think that's indicative of how difficult it is to find high school principals today in the state of Wisconsin. That's, that's a, that's a challenge. I mean, administrators in general are challenged, but high school principals are very unique in that challenge. If we slide down to the deputy superintendent, that was a position that, that I couldn't find good comparable information of. And by the way, the, the upper boxes with elementary, middle, high school and high school APs, I got that all off the DPI website. And a couple, and the business services position, the HR position, I think building and grounds, I got those all off the DPI website, which was very easy and great information to get. A number of the positions, you, you couldn't get that information off the DPI website and one of those is the deputy superintendent. So here what you have is basically their highest second-page position in their district. My recommendation with that range is that we do the CPI at 1.46%. Turn the page, executive directors. Without being too repetitive, you can see the information here in the box and once again, just, you know, it was, it was hard to get good raw data on the years and you can see Sue's situation and actually you can see the HR person's situation is showing three because I've been here three years, but technically this is my 25th year of school administration. Basically what I did was I took the business services and the HR, averaged the two and then created a range and that range I proposed it to go up a little bit. Next page. Director of Curriculum and Assessment, our director of curriculum assessment. You can see the numbers here. You can see the range average, you can see where our position is at in Oshkosh. Number of years in this position is relatively, relatively the same. Very interesting, pretty, pretty, lack of a better word, young administrators. Once again, they may not just be three years in a position, but when you look at all these districts and the average is about three years in a position, that's pretty short-term really. Director of Learning, the asterix exemplify the five school districts that I was able to match up on, but the rest of them I could not match up on. And so just turn the page here to Director of People's Services and Director of Special Education. In a lot of districts, the Director of People's Services and Special Education is the same position. And so the long and the short is what I did here was I took the Director of Curriculum Information, Director of Special Education Information, Director of People's Services, I averaged the three and created a, a, a range for those three and I'm proposing that we, we move that range slightly as is proposed there. So, next page. Building and Grounds. This was one of the, like the high school principalship, this was one of the ranges that was, was more or less out of whack compared to the comparables. And you can see the comparables average out there is 80, I'm sorry, 92.2. Our Oshkosh position is, is 87.7 and that's the top of our position. So our top of our position is about $4,000 shy of the, of the average of the rest of those schools. And then you can see that number of years in the position is 7.8 and of course Jim is in his first year in his position. So this is one of the ranges that I'm proposing that, that is increased and of course that's, that increase in that range is, is substantial, but that's based on the comparables that are exactly out there. And so what I'd like to do with 223-1R is create a range for building and grounds separately because it really doesn't fit the rec department, because really, building and grounds and the recreation department and the food service positions are all non-instructional directors and they all have the same range. But the range really doesn't fit for building and grounds and the other two. This range is, these comparables are so much higher, so I'd like to have, you know, just create that separate range for building and grounds and have the non-instructional, food service and recreation in their own range.
Excuse me, along with that, I believe that, and I wanted to share that there are a number of Wisconsin districts that do have the Director of Recreation position, however they don't happen to be in this set of districts that the rule says that we should be looking at, so-
Correct.
It's challenging to compare data.
Yep. Okay, Director of Food Service. As you can see there, I would propose that we move that range up slightly based on the information. The average there is almost 79.6 and our average is 74. Our Activity Coordinators, the high school principal, the building and grounds, they're Activity Coordinators. These were the three that the range comparables dictated that we make some substantial moves. All of the other ones are either the CPI or slight, slight increases as compared to these. But you can see our Activity Coordinators, the, the average range here is 84. Our, our Activity Coordinators average is $60,000. The years is 6.1 and our people have been with us a number of years, 16 years. So the propose, I propose that we move that range, as you can see in that lower box down there for no assistant principal duties because that's what our people are, they do not have assistant principal duties. I would propose we move that range, you know, from the 61 to 81 to the 74, 94 based on the comparables with that. The Controlling, it was very difficult to, to match up positions a lot and there are a number of districts that position's not even a, considered an administrative position. So I would propose we do a 1.46 CPI there. Our Technology Infrastructure Services Manager, I would, once again, difficult to match up, I propose a CPI there. Going back, going to the next page, page eight, Custodial Supervisor.
On the previous handout that you gave us, it was titled Network Engineer and now it's Technology Infrastructure and Service Manager. Is there, like with, I should say, let me rephrase that. Previously, with Buildings and Grounds, you were talking about how you wanted to separate that out. Is there something that happened here that changed that title?
No, that changed quite a while back.
It's changed... Oh, so, I mean, first, you just didn't have it on there, okay.
Yes, yes.
That's fine.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm sorry, I had the wrong title on there, probably that first document. Personnel Supervisor, that's a position that I couldn't match up very well with. I would go with the CPI. And Recreation Supervisors, Food Service Supervisors, I'd also recommend the CPI. Now, in this document, if you go back to page, actually, page three N. And here's where, basically, lays it out for all of your positions. So, for example, we look at the Deputy Superintendent, we have a current range right there, one point six-four percent, we moved the midpoint, and that would create the new range right there. So, I just wanted to point out to you that as you look here, this would summarize all the data, all the study work that was done. And this would be the, this would be the ultimate recommendation going forward for the seventeenth. This page and a half right here that talks about all the new ranges. All right.
I have to admit, I'm a little confused about the reference to the CPI and one point four-six, because I've seen data that suggests that the CPI varies from month to month. So...
We used the average over last year, right?
I was going with the one point four-six that we went with for the increases in salaries for the district.
It is the one determined by the board that regulates our Wisconsin relations commission.
And I know that's what we use this year, but that doesn't necessarily mean the number will be one point four-six next year, does it?
Oh, no. It'll be a new number for next year.
Yes, but they still will include energy or food in there, as far as the inflationary means. What can they say, is vice energy or food?
Okay. Let me just... Oh, my God, more paper. I have to go outside. With those salary ranges, if those are approved next week, what happens is, is we end up with eight administrators that are below the bottom of the range, the bottom of the range. We end up with four assistant principals, two middle school principals, and two of our, two activity directors. And so, what I would be doing is, is I would be proposing that we move those eight administrators to the bottom, and I want to repeat that, to the bottom of the range, of the proposed range. And if you look in here to page, well, the last page here, basically, I've listed the four assistant principals, last page, I've listed the four assistant principals. And let's just take the first one. The bottom of the range is eighty thousand, that person's current salary, and the difference is what it would take to get up to the bottom of the range. And if we move these people to the bottom of the range at eighty thousand, the average of those ranges is eighty-eight, nine, eighty-eight, six. There's still eight thousand dollars below the average of the range, but it would be moving them to the bottom. Also, if we move the middle school principals, as you can see, their salary, the bottom of the range, their current salary difference, it would take twelve hundred dollars to move each one of those two people to the bottom of the range. And their Activity Coordinators are the two that are most out of sync with the comparables. The bottom of the range is seventy-four, they're currently at about sixty-one, and you can see the difference that what it would take to move them up. And even if we get them to the bottom of the comparable range, there's still about ten thousand dollars off the average for those ranges. In addition, we had, when we had the one point four-six applied to the administrative team, we had five elementary positions that were new, so the one point four-six percent for those people were not used at all. Stan did not use his one point four-six. And when we put those monies together, it's about eighty-five hundred dollars. What I propose that we do with that, that eighty-five hundred dollars, is we move two of our, two of our middle school principals, remember, middle school, it's about four thousand dollars each, so that we get them more in comp with our other three middle school principals. We have three middle school principals that average out about ninety-six or ninety-seven thousand, and these people are at like ninety-two. So, I think we need to get them up closer, so that the five people are more in a closer range for the experience and the stuff that they bring to the district. So, I'd be recommending that we use that money that was intended for salaries, it just wasn't used there, and it's still in that pot of money. And then I would propose, one more proposal, I would propose that with our Building and Grounds, Director of Building and Grounds, when we were bringing Jim Fox to the district, Sue and I, we knew that our top wasn't even close to the comparables, and we did everything we wanted to do to seal the deal with Jim Fox. And as a result, we indicated that the board went with a one point four-six increase, that we would try to honor that with a one point four-six beyond where we were at the top of the range. Because we couldn't go above that range to bring him in. I mean, that's, the top of the range was by board policy, so we could not go above that. But we knew we were trying to work to bring Jim in here, and we're to do that, that's the talk that we had, and we're hopeful that we can honor that, one point four-six.
Any questions? Bob?
I appreciate the work that you've done on this, and you and I have met repeatedly, going back to, I think, June, on this issue. One of the, one of the concerns I continue to have is related to our elementary principal cadre. You and I have talked about this before. We have five elementary principals who have, I believe, at least four years of service, who are making a hundred and thirty-four dollars more than some people who were hired and now have zero years of experience or one year of experience, some of whom have emergency licenses or started with emergency licenses, which means they did not complete the course of study, leading to a full license. And I have a real concern in terms of equity with those people who have been here four or more years and yet are paid less than people who have zero or one years of experience, not only in this district, but overall, that is, they're brand-new to administration. So, I would like to, if we're going to do something with a group or groups, individual groups, middle school, a couple of middle school principals, high school assistant principals, and Director of Buildings and Grounds, I would like to see us do something with these five elementary principals. Maybe that would mean raising them by a thousand dollars, so that there, there's at least more of, there's less compression between their salaries and these brand-new people, some of whom are not fully licensed.
And let me share with, call the board with what I did share with Barb relative to these five. And most of you, you might already call this, but in the summer of like two thousand thirteen, well, let me back this up. The CPI was two percent, and all of our employees ended up with a two percent raise for the thirteen, fourteen school year. Budget reconciliation took the administrative staff from a two percent raise to a one percent increase, one percent CPI increase. We took that one percent pool of money and moved the five people that Barb was referring to, seven thousand dollars, because they were so far behind, and we brought them up to it, to where we brought them up, which is pretty similar to the other people in there. So, the rest of the administrative team took an entire freeze in order to move those people up there with that seven thousand dollars. I just want to put that on the table, so you have that background information as you're making decisions and moving forward. That's accurate. And, you know, if the board wants me to, I could put some thought into that in next week's proposal, come back with something to differentiate those people a little bit. But we did move those people a year ago that much for what it's worth.
We should also state that Mike did the extensive work of working out a hypothetical salary spread to recognize all experience for our present administrators. And, Mike, you may want to just quote that number that would not be an administrative recommendation, but it is, it's not affordable at this time, and we would not recommend it.
Correct, correct. After the last board meeting a couple of weeks ago, I wanted to just put a pencil to, let's just say that we had some sort of salary schedule that if you came in year one, and twelve years later, you'd move through the range to the top, satisfactory job performance and da-da-da-da-da. And then maybe you had a step after three years, six years, nine years, and you hit the twelve. So, I took that three, six, nine, and applied it to the experience level of our current administrators in their current positions, and just to see what that would do, you know, with internal equity, so to speak, and differentiation. And when I got done, it was about a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. And that's just, we can't recommend that, we just don't think that's doable. But that's what it would take.
That also tells us that we're sorely underpaying.
So, we don't have a structure for administrators like we did, like you just created for teachers? Compensation schedule?
No, correct, we do not.
Yeah, and as I not so elegantly said two weeks ago, it's mush. Everything's mushed together with our, and that is the reality of what we have, is a must schedule, of which there hasn't been any differentiation and recognizing. We have that handful of experienced administrators that we're not compensating. And that's why, going to Allison's comment, why if we look at our compensation and expenditure for administrators per student, for administration per student, we have been second or third lowest in the state of Wisconsin, because we simply, we don't keep them, we don't, we don't pay them at comparable levels, and we're, you know, two, three hundred dollars below closest neighbors per student expenditure. So, that is the result of that. But in an ideal world, we should have that differentiation, because it would also lead to administrative stability in the district, because people would have career, successful performers, and we have a number of those individuals here in the district would be staying because there is an incentive to stay.
Well, we've talked about the high turnover in administrative ranks, and if I'm here four years, or in some cases, twelve years, and I'm getting paid a hundred and thirty-four dollars more than someone who just started, who has not finished her licensure, that's not, that's not recognizing my contribution, my knowledge base, my skill set that I've developed as a principal over time. But I still would contend that it's, the money is important, absolutely, but people who've shared with me reasons for their looking elsewhere are not tied to money. It's how they're respected, how they get along with their supervisor, how they, the workload, what they're asked to do. It's a whole host of things, but it's not just dollars that cause people necessarily to look elsewhere. Sometimes it's, it's, we lost, at least one principal this year who told me, looked me right in the eye and said, "I'll be ten minutes from home, you know, I've been commuting forty-five minutes." You can't compete with that. Paying more money doesn't, doesn't offset the amount of time, and the new baby was on the way. So, I mean, those are all variables that we can't control, and paying more money doesn't differentiate that. The other thing I think we need to take a look at, and I would like to request, and I am requesting the data, would be to look at the number of positions we have that are under the teacher's salary schedule. And I don't know all the three-letter acronyms, so bear with me, but the CSTs, the support people in those roles, the PBIS specialists, the people in the special ed department who review the IDPs, people in the special ed department who go out and observe behaviors and track behaviors. We have a lot of people in those ranks. And to me, that's an extension of the administrative team here that has been assembled, and it helps them do their work. It doesn't replace what they're doing, by any means, I know they're oblivious, I know they work hard, but it allows their reach to be much farther than if those positions were not there. So, and to me, that's part of the working conditions. If you turn the clock back to the year two thousand, to nineteen ninety-six, there were no CST people, or then they were called ISTs. But none of those extra people existed. So, since nineteen ninety-six, that's when all of those came into play. So, picture a curriculum office with one curriculum person, and that, a Director of Learning, Director of Instruction, and then all the ISTs or CSTs.
We won't be able to respond to that. We expect the comparison data. We've been waiting patiently from our, the state WITSTAX group. We are on par. In fact, we have less than our sister districts in our expenditure per instructional support, which is that category. We will be able to show you the comparison, and we'll wait for that data, because then we have the comparative data. Our number of positions, and we know from our staff relating to their colleagues in other districts, we're understaffed in that area as well. And that's, the world between two thousand and two thousand fourteen in instructional expectation outcomes is a different world, revolutionized by No Child Left Behind, and it's a different world today.
Geometric progression.
As a reminder, at our education committee meeting tomorrow, the main agenda item is talking about exactly what those instructional support teachers do, their roles, and the student achievement that they support with classroom teachers. So, thank you.
But the financial statistics, I'm looking forward to seeing that comparison, because apparently, they can't run the numbers, of course, until DPI has all the audit reports in, and Sue tells me that was December first deadline. And so, we would hope that we would be able to get that. We already have, we placed our order three months ago for that updated manual, and we look forward to getting it, because it will demonstrate again our relative position compared to the rest of the state.
I thought that the reason that we brought this up in workshop, one of the reasons, was to look at the years of service. And then also because we were, I know I was, getting emails, phone calls from teachers saying, you know, they were upset, they were angry, and then we actually had a previous employee come and speak sternly at us. So, I'm surprised that we're not talking about that, because if we had to vote on this again next week during a regular board, are we ready to vote? Because I don't think we've discussed it yet, and I thought that was the main reason about why we brought this back. So, maybe I'm wrong.
No, I agree.
May I suggest, however, that in a position such as these, and I take this issue very seriously, because you have established for me one of the goals of holding on to individuals, that in no institutional arrangement of any private or public corporation, do people who report to the people determine the compensation rate for those individuals. That's utterly nonsense in a relative position to do so and to take a disaffected individual who was not chosen for administrative position, who was seeking that position, and use that as a ground, is a very hard one to accept, in the fact that the person would have been, one of those positions benefited from that, had that person been selected. So, that, we need to be very careful where we listen. Secondly, I do believe that when we're looking at trying to stabilize the district, which you've held as a goal for me, that to come forward with a cost this year of twenty-two thousand dollars and holding on to people that if we were to replace them, we would have to be at the market. We would have to pay that anyway. Otherwise, we won't find individuals to take the positions, that it's something that we have to take very seriously. And I've checked around, only in our district would we be having repeated hours of discussions about this minimal amount of compensation to deal with a small group of employees compensated. to deal with a small group of employees compensating.
The questions that I've gotten, that I think maybe we need to do a better job of communicating, I think when they saw the market adjustment, they assumed everybody was somehow getting moved. And so that was kind of the question that we were getting was, wait a minute. Everybody's getting moved? I don't get it. Because it wasn't real clear. I mean, it was clear to us because we've been in all the meetings. Maybe it wasn't clear to everybody else. But, no, the market analysis is its own thing, and we're not doing anything other than moving salary ranges, okay? Now, we have eight people that have fallen outside of the range. Those people we have to take care of. So that's how I tried to explain it. I'm comfortable with that, but we were not comfortable with that last week. So I wanted to see, is the board comfortable now? Are we okay?
I think for me, there's still a feeling of inequity that we're selecting a few, and there's no model, there's no compensation model. But we're selecting a few, and we're not looking at all administrators in a compensation model. I know we can't afford it, but there's a sense of inequity that I still feel, especially when you bring up the elementary counselors. Something, I mean, principals, I'm so sorry. You know where my head is all the time. Something doesn't feel equitable. It just doesn't feel equitable. And I hear what you're saying, Stan, I hear what you're saying. But I also know that that individual took a hit over, from an email from people because of speaking her mind. And I think that as long as there's this undercurrent of you can't speak your mind without getting thrown under the bus, that that continues to set up a morale issue that is just very troubling for me. It's just very troubling for me. And until you know that individual's side of the story, I would encourage us all to not place judgment. So, I'll make peace on that. But there's something that just feels inequitable. I can't put my finger on it, it's just a feeling. And I'm still approached by people in the community, I was today. You're not going to do that, are you? You know?
I think that we need to, I mean, the whole concept of inequity, yes, it's there. If you looked at what you were saying about the elementary principals, to me, it was a direct reflection from bottom to top. Here you have a person coming in on apparel level at $1,282, and 25 years later, they're making $87 more. Here, as a principal of an elementary school, you've been here a number of years, and you're making $134 more. And I guess what I worry about is, number one, Mike, thank you very much for this date. I think you did an outstanding job, and it did not cost us $70,000. Is that we need to move forward with this. I would, for myself, I'm comfortable with moving the Paris and the food service workers and these eight individuals forward. I would not be opposed to having, like, the elementary principals be brought back, the ones who have got some length of service in, and maybe have a recommendation on trying to be more equitable about that. My concern on this is that jamming everything up and holding it up while we sit there and try to come to a perfect solution is, well, certainly anti-war, art of war, Sun Tzu. I mean, you've got to, you have to keep mobile. Everything falls apart, you've got to keep mobile on this stuff. And the point on that is, is that if we just become, if we get so tied and wrapped up in the process and the procedure of things that we become stagnant, then everything kind of fades on this. Yes, if, we need to look at the educators. We need to look at all of our staff and stuff on how we take care of them. But I just would hate to see us not move forward on any of this stuff, I guess, while we try to develop this system, you know?
The system, and the hypothetical system that Mike worked out is, would be common to what other districts operate on. It's just not affordable to do that, and we should really recognize that that at this time, to propose $174,000, $175,000 is not in the question. And I totally agree with Dr. Herzog's suggestion on if we can tweak those elementary positions and recognize that service, I think makes extreme sense to at least keep those individuals comparable who were caught in this misalignment and really off again, on again, frozen salaries. And last year, I sat with all the rest of the administrators and told them why seven people were taking the 1% that remained. And I got no complaint from the rest of the administrators who simply absorbed it. They got nothing. Because it was, those positions were so drastically out of line that we took the 1% we had left and distributed among those who were most seriously out of line. And this administrative team hung in there with it. The other piece that we should be reminded of, that although, for whatever reasons, individuals, including new babies, and being closer to family with other people leaving, and whatever reason, nobody left us and went to work for less in other districts.
Oh, that's true.
No, nobody left us and went to work for less.
But the motivator, my point is the motivator wasn't, oh, I'll go here because I can get more money. No, I'll go closer to home, nobody's coming, oh, and I'll get more money. So that's the number-one criterion. I do think we have to be careful about individuals who come and speak to the board. We heard in the listening session last week how challenging, how that develops fear in people. And the individual who chose to speak to the board that night, I think was courageous in coming forward. We say we're a district that adheres to the civility project, the Oshkosh Civility Project. And the retort that individual received does not reflect that. To me, that's not acceptable. So if we're going to adhere to the civility project, and we need to adhere to the civility project, we need to walk the talk and talk the walk. Walk the talk.
We know what you mean.
Something like that, that's right. But I really would like to see us do something for that handful of elementary principals who have gotten caught here. Now, having said that, we've talked about a variety of things tonight, including equity for custodial types and secretaries. I heard today from a teacher, again, about, you know, what we did in terms of taking away the bottom, whatever it was, four steps from the teacher's salary schedule. So now you have, I'm told, veterans in the five-to-eight-year range who are making about the same as a brand-new person. So that's not riding well either. So we might be able to do something with administrators, but we've got a whole big group out there, at least of teachers, if not custodians and secretaries comparing themselves with paraprofessionals. So lots of issues.
Yes, and as I listened to all of this discussion, this is really, really good stuff, I think to myself, you can't move the mountain overnight. You know, inch by inch, life's this inch, yard by yard, it can be pretty dang hard. So, you know, and I think we've got to take these pieces and bite them off in bite-sized chunks, like Stan says. And each time we do something, we're moving this organization in the right direction. It's just probably not fast enough for our state urgency.
Yeah, and if I look at the long-term history, and it goes back to, you know, what we've inherited, what this board bravely have done with investment in facilities, neglected for 30 years, and what this board bravely has done two years ago, the community voted for five years' worth of additional funding for facilities, and what a month ago, you approved to complete those. We're spending a lot of time picking up the pieces from the past that we're trying to get ourselves into alignment so that we can be successful for children in the future. And what we have with teacher compensation and dealing with that, we're, and each of our groups, they've all suffered along the way with that. And we're trying to find small pieces to play catch-up on, just like we have with facilities. And I always remind individuals that the internal workings of those buildings that are 42 years and older are just in fine shape. They just don't look as fancy and nice as our sister districts around us with brand-new buildings. But are they safe? Are they good? Are they durable? Will they work for the next 50 years? Yes?
I think with the proposal on ranges, the report might have been enhanced by maybe one more major point that would have said, while there are no costs associated with these recommendations at this time, there would be in the future.
John?
Meaning, I'm sorry.
Meaning on your budget financial impact, you've noted when there are no costs associated with this. But if a high school principal or someone in the administrative ranks were leave tomorrow, and these new ranges were in effect, then yes, there would be an implication. But there's not an implication next Wednesday if those ranges go through necessarily.
Sure, I mean, take a high school principal, for example. Let's just say that we were to recruit somebody that had 12 years' experience and is coming from a district making X. And if we really want that person badly enough, we're going to have to match X or most likely do better. And that's probably going to put that person somewhere in that range. You know, and of course, if you bring them to the top, the top goes up a little bit, the top goes up a little bit, just like you're referring to. Or even if you bring somebody in the bottom, because the bottom came up a little bit, there's a little bit more cost to bring them in from the bottom. And once again, those ranges are predicated on those 11 schools and what's happening out there in the range.
Right.
John, thank you. Just want to address Allison's question.
How are you feeling, John?
I think I'm comfortable. I think the issue I had was, you know, last time, I didn't want, you know, you know, we need to make these adjustments. Last time, I didn't know that there was all this work going on with the lower-paid groups. And it looked like we were just kind of taking care of the higher-paid group for the higher-paid groups. And I'm comfortable now with knowing that we are also working on and doing something for the lower-paid groups. And if it comes for us as a package, I'm very comfortable with that.
Is, are there thoughts of a plan, a future compensation plan for all the groups that's similar, not similar to, but looks structured out like how the teacher compensated?
For the administrative team?
Or everybody, whoever? I mean, that looks similar to what you just did, rolled out for the teachers, even though that's not, you know, a perfect model? It's a model, at least.
Tonight, you looked at the food service, you looked at the Paris. We're going to spend more time in the custodial maintenance because I do know we need to seriously look at that system because there's some of the things that ended up out of whack with the food service. The custodial maintenance had the same issues. So we need to look at that. With the administrative piece, if I were to look at doing something for the future relative to some sort of structure to get people, to move people through the range, one, I would want to have ample time to do a really good study. And I'm just saying, look at the school districts, what are they doing? You know, and look at what we would want to do here in Oshkosh. So, you know, I'm very familiar, very interesting because, you know, you all know I was in Fonda as the HR for six years. While I was there, we saw the management plan. We had a plan that addressed all that. Interestingly enough, when Act 10 came along, the plan basically didn't work anymore because the most you would want to do was the CPI. But in order to do a plan to move somebody through a range, you have to do more than the CPI because you can't move through the range with, because a range usually moves a CPI. Do you see what I'm saying?
I do, because unless you can get people over the cost of living, it's not a raise.
Right.
And that language continues to get thrown out. And it kind of unnerves me every time it happens, you know? It's not a raise unless you can get people over the cost of living.
Correct, yeah. So, you know, I'd have to spend some time studying all that. It would be interesting to see what's happening out there, given Act 10 and everything that's happened.
I just think it would create much more equity if all the groups were on some sort of a compensation structure that had, you know, that had been thought through. And it wasn't just, okay, here's a range, and, you know, you kind of fall in that range. But teachers follow a plan. And to me, that creates inequity when you've got some people just kind of in this range, and then you've got people that are structured through a range. Do you see what I'm saying? I just think it's, it creates a morale issue.
Any comments? Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mike.
Yes, thank you, Mike. Do we have any requests for future agenda items?
We got Infinite Campus on there, didn't we?
Yep, that's a plan coming. All right, could I get a motion to adjourn to Executive Session 4? Consider the employee promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee under which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility under State Statute 19.851(c). Discuss performance of individually licensed employee. Could I get a second?
Second.
All right, hold on.
Vito?
Aye.
Vito, aye, Alana?
Aye.
Aye, Agartha?
Aye.
Agartha, aye, Crystal?
Aye.
Shaggy, aye, Lenny?
Aye.
How was her, aye, Sagan?
Aye.
Second act, aye, Rachel?
Aye.
Very good.